Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Melissa, will you please call the roll?
Mary McCauley.
Present.
Scott Gingold. Mary Beth Burns.
Here.
Violetta Cullen.
Present.
Myrna Aravalo.
Here.
Kirill Miranchov.
Here.
And who did it? I forget. And Lisa Deacon.
All right. With five members present, we do have a quorum, which is exciting. Also present tonight is zoning planner Melissa Klotz. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time, so all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file, and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence reasonably question witnesses or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then, the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statements to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements, so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There is one item on the agenda for this evening, and you are 3015 Payne? You are. Anybody? Anybody else? They are here, so we are good to go with that. Our first item on our agenda, however, is the approval of meeting minutes from April 4th. Did everybody get a chance to read those meeting minutes?
Yes.
Any changes?
I move that the minutes be approved.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the meeting minutes have passed. All right. We are now going on to new business, and we will first, anyone who wishes to speak on this case with 3015 Payne Street, will you please raise your right hand? And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
You.
Fantastic. Melissa will now read the case into the record, and then we'll invite you up to tell us about the project.
Daniel Torenheim, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct a one-story addition to connect a detached garage to a single-family residence to create an attached garage in the R1 Single Family Residential District. The applicant proposes a 2.7-foot east interior side yard setback for the existing garage where five feet is required. Zoning code section 6828A3. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variation application submitted April 4th, 2017, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey, site plans, elevations, two letters of support, one letter of opposition, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and dapper draft meeting minutes of April 26th, 2017, as well as two additional letters of support that were handed out at the beginning of the meeting.
Do we want to label those? Or no? Doesn't matter?
Sure.
So we're going to label them applicant one and applicant two. Just so we know what everything is. Arc, okay. All right. Would you mind coming up and telling us about your project, please? Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
If you can start with your name and address?
Sure.
Business address.
Sure. My name is Dan Torenheim. My business address is 230 West Superior, Suite 2F, Chicago, Illinois. Thanks for putting that up, Melissa. I was going to ask you about that. Just a quick overview of the project. The owner is proposing the work to their house to provide more space for their growing family. They have, they regularly have extended family over to their house for gatherings. They have cousins. Mom and dad live in the area, and so they commonly have people over, and that's why they're proposing to expand their home. The scope of the work is to convert an existing detached one-car garage that's on the west side of their house currently. That's being, going to be used now for a larger dining room for that extended family and for gatherings. Also, the proposed work is to have an addition off the back of the house for a larger kitchen, and also the part of that addition is to attach, a mudroom to attach the main house to the existing detached garage. The existing detached garage is about 14 feet away from the existing house itself. There is currently no work planned to that existing garage other than the attachment of the mudroom addition. And the current work that's proposed is, the addition work is a one-story addition, not a two-story addition, just a one-story addition. The existing two-car garage is currently located on the east side of the property, adjacent to the public alley. Unlike most detached garages, which are set in the back of the property at the public alley, this garage is located close to the existing house towards the middle of the property, but also on a public alley. And we feel this is a unique situation to most residences in the City of Evanston. The garage is on a slight angle to the alley, putting the northeast corner at 3.85 feet from the property line and the southeast corner 2.7 feet from the property line. The proposal is to connect the detached garage to the house, making it an attached garage. The zoning standards for detached garage, as Melissa mentioned, require a five-foot side yard setback from the property line. So our current garage is set 2.3 feet within the required side yard setback. In terms of the variance standards, we believe that the variance, if it's approved, will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. This is most clearly identified by the multiple letters of support from adjacent neighbors. We believe the proposal is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. As I understand it, one of the top priorities for the zoning setback rules are to keep buildings a safe distance away from one another in case of fire. The setbacks are first and foremost a life safety measure in addition to a property standard. The existing garage is located adjacent to a 20-foot public alley, putting it at a safe distance from adjacent structures. Because the side yard setback rules differ between detached and attached garages, three foot versus five foot, we feel there is a practical difficulty to this particular property. Tearing down and rebuilding a garage that is 2.3 feet west of the current location is fairly impractical. Changing the design is also impractical, because any design that proposes to attach the garage will lead to the same hardship. The proposal is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. The goal is to simply expand the space for the needs of the growing family. The proposed variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship. Thank you for your time.
I have a question.
Yes.
If I understood the documents that were presented to us, the, there's a one-car garage on the west side of the house with a driveway?
There is a one-car garage on the west side of the house currently, but there is no longer any driveway or curb cut.
Yeah, because it said that there was a driveway that would be removed, but the photo of the home did not show a driveway.
Right. Yeah. It's, I can't remember, I'd have to ask Skip, when it was removed, but it was removed within the last year or two or a few years, but...
Okay.
Did you, you can, just did I swear you in? Let me swear you in quickly. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Fantastic. And please come to a microphone and state your name and address. Thank you. So many rules.
That's fine. I work for Metro, and I'm familiar with the board of directors there. So my name is William Benz. I live at 3015 Payne Street, Evanston, Illinois. The driveway that was there that leading up to that single-car garage was removed approximately four years ago.
Okay. And do I also understand that the single-car garage has really always been used more or less as additional house space?
Yeah, it's used as storage space right now. It's so small that you could fit, for some of you that are younger than me, like a VW bug or something in there. Like, it's not very wide. And, you know, the one thing I'd like to add to this comment is, you know, I grew up in Evanston. I was born here, I was raised here, long-time resident. My cousin lives down the street. My mom lives there, my dad lives in Evanston. We want to take great care with kind of preserving what we feel is like this kind of idea of how Evanston presents itself, right? Where this idea that there's a unique nature to the homes here. And so, we've taken care with this kind of addition, that we want to preserve that kind of look for us and for the people around us.
And so, you built the garage, the two-car garage on the property?
We did. We built that approximately, I think it was four or five years ago. We built that at a time that we had two children.
Right.
Since then, we've added two more in.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And so, we, you know, this is simply kind of an idea that we're going to connect it in, add a little bit more space, and this building for a mudroom to kind of accommodate our family.
Got it.
So, how long have you lived in the house?
Approximately five years.
Five years.
Coming around six, I believe. Six.
Yeah. Any other questions from anybody else? I got a couple. So, the first question I have is, when we consider the minimum change necessary, we sometimes like to see what other options were looked at for this design? Because when I look at this quickly, I see that there seems to be an option that would fit in a conforming location, right? Within the five-foot side yard setback and be 10 feet from the garage. So, can you talk to me about that design?
I'm really not familiar with the design, but in order for...
Sorry. I'm going to ask you about that question, then. If you're the architect of record, how are you not familiar with the design?
The design that you mentioned, which differs from the design that we have proposed?
Okay. So you only proposed one design to the client?
Yes. We have one proposed, approved design from the client, yes.
Did you propose other options to the client?
No.
So there was one option to the client. So you never considered an option that was conforming as to all zoning rules?
In order to, in order to appease the client by attaching our current house, the current house to the detached garage, there's really no way around the change in the setback rules. If you move the addition, still attach the garage, any attachment to the detached garage...
Right. So it was never considered to do a, to not attach the garage? Because you can get your mudroom and all the other goodies you're looking for in a conforming location. You just don't get the attached garage.
Right. And that's not the scope of work.
And that was not considered at all?
No, that was not the desire of the client, because that's not the scope of work. That's a totally different project.
I don't know that it's totally different. Yeah, you can jump in anytime.
I respectfully disagree, right? The intent from, as the client's speaking, we always wanted to attach the garage to the house. For this idea that, you know, when you're bringing four kids in to the house, you know, we're pulling into the garage, and this idea that we want to have a seamless entryway from the garage now into the house.
So let me ask you a question, then. When you built the garage five years ago, and you had an architect do that, yes?
Correct.
Not like Danley or somebody like that, right? So, full-on licensed architect. Did you have those conversations with them at that time about wanting to be able to attach the garage?
It was never contemplated at that time.
So with two kids, it wasn't necessary to have an attached garage, but with four kids, it became necessary to have an attached garage?
I think it's been in that house for approximately one year, I think at the time that was built.
Okay.
So we're still kind of learning and growing with the house and what our needs were. So I can't speak to as whether it was contemplated or not with two versus four, but at that time, we'd been in the house for less than a year, or a year approximately.
Okay.
Is the lot coverage in compliance with zoning?
Yes.
And impervious surfaces in compliance with zoning?
Yes.
So the only area of noncompliance is the garage now being noncompliant or no longer legal nonconforming because of the attachment?
That's correct.
Okay. How did the garage get built, though, without the, as a legal nonconforming? Was that just because of the lay of the land or something?
You mean in terms of like the way that it's currently...
Being less than three feet, right.
You know, I asked that question as well, because I'm not the architect that built the garage. There are currently, and I've done other houses and garage structures in the City of Evanston, and they do have rules where they require us to provide actual surveys showing the location of the garage foundations. But it's very possible, and we'd have to look back at records, that that time, they didn't require that. So while it was probably, probably drawn that way, it was built, you know, four inches in the wrong direction, on a skew. That's, you know...
It happens.
It happens, yeah. So, it probably was not intended to do that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
So then, just to be clear about what your hardship is, can you explain what you believe your hardship is again? That's unique to the property, not to the family that lives there.
Sure. So, the current garage in its current location is in the middle of the property, off of a public alley. The hardship is that the location of the garage in relation to, that's in relation to the property line, it is, although it's slightly off, it is conforming currently as a detached garage. It's unique in that it's set in the middle of the property. This property has two alleys that border it. And the hardship is that, you know, it's a, it's a structure located in a unique spot, unlike a lot of other garage structures in the City of Evanston. And the hardship is that when we do attach it, then our, the rules and zoning laws change for that attached garage, and that's the hardship.
And I noticed in your notes that when answering the question, that the hardship has not been self-created.
Correct.
How do you reconcile that? Because your owners built the garage, so they created their own hardship.
I think that's a misleading premise, because at the time of building the garage, it was built conforming. If you presume, which is, they could see the future, that they would have future plans that they were, they knew about, but they didn't, that they didn't know of future plans at that point. So, to presume that they would have done this, you know, they would purposely have done this, is kind of, I think it's false. It's not possible to presume that. Nobody can see into the future. Nobody can tell if they're going to do something like attach a garage to an existing house, making it an attached garage versus the detached garage. I think that the argument is that, you know, that statement just simply isn't plausible.
Since we have the owner of the property here, we can ask you, did you, at the time that you put up that garage, foresee that you might one day want to...
I mean, had we known, I mean, I think the, what's the setback? An additional foot?
Two.
Two feet?
Two feet. I mean, we have, you know...
70 feet.
We have a lot of space there, right? I mean, we have, we have an alley here, we have an alley here, we have enough yard to space back two feet. You know, I would not want to kind of jeopardize anything if we had those plans, not set it back two feet. It doesn't really matter to us. It wouldn't matter to us at that time. We would have just done it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
I have a question. Do you anticipate some water runoff problems now that you close a gap between the garage and the building?
No. Actually, the owners did a really good job of regrading the property, so that all the water runs off towards the south alley and somewhat also towards the east alley and towards the street, Payne Street. And I have those civil engineering drawings that were done by the civil engineer that show the swales and show the direction and the heights of, heights of grade. And I reviewed that with Ingrid, the civil engineer here, and it all looks really great. So even our proposed addition does not impact the water runoff. And we're, we are taking our water from the roofs and down, through downspouts to the east alley, and also to the back yard that has a swale that goes out to the, that north alley.
So the engineering department actually agrees with the addition and how you show the runoff of rainwater to the alleys?
Yes. And I did talk to Ingrid again today, just to see kind of how her review is, and she said her review was, theoretically, her review was finished, and that she agreed with all the proposed changes.
Thank you.
If I can add one thing, I mean, one thing I love about Evanston, right? We have these huge mature trees that kind of line our streets. When we moved in the house, we lost one, possibly two trees because of previous owners not dealing with the runoff and it being kind of a swamp back there. We had to cut down these trees. And it was sad, right? And we still have cutouts of them, chairs made out of them in our backyard, because, I mean, that's what we love about Evanston. You walk down Central, you know, Central Street, Payne, Lincoln, you see these huge trees as a canopy. So we've worked hard to kind of, you know, both maintain what we have, replant, and address kind of the water runoff issues.
So no other questions? So is there anything you'd like to say in summation?
Thanks.
Nope. You're good to go?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. You guys can have a seat. And with that, we will close the record, because there's nobody else here to comment. So, comments from the board?
I think that it's fairly typical in the progression of owning a property, that as your circumstances change, your desires to accommodate your family create, you know, a new stage of development necessary for the land. To me, it looks like a very attractive, a very attractive plan. I really like the fact that the front yard is all grass. In every other way, they're conforming and perhaps even a little under land coverage and impervious surface coverage. And so, for the sake of, I think it would be a shame to not attach the garage as they're doing this renovation, because, I mean, they could leave an artificial alleyway just to not attach it, but that, to me, doesn't seem to make sense if they're doing the addition. And the garage is there, the neighbors support the project. I don't see why we would turn this down.
Thank you. This side of the board.
I agree with Mary. It's a good project.
Anybody else?
I don't have any objections to the project.
I don't see a problem with it if your neighbors don't have a problem with it.
Okay. I happen not to agree with anybody else. I believe very firmly in not creating your own hardship, and I feel very strongly that, given that, I might have a different feeling on that if the garage done five years ago had been by a garage builder, as it were, where I know that those conversations about side yard setbacks and those things wouldn't have happened. I feel pretty confident, not saying for certain, but I would feel pretty confident that an architect would have had, would have broached that conversation with an owner about a garage at that time and potentially attaching it and those sorts of things. So, that's my primary difficulty with the project. The second is that there's a way to, yes, you can't have the attached garage, but there's a way to get everything else you want, which is the mudroom and the extra bathroom and the storage and all that sort of stuff in a conforming location. It just means not attaching to the garage. And, you know, I would like a bigger house. That's not my hardship, though. That's not a hardship for me to get a bigger house. So for me, just wanting to attach it to the garage is not the hardship here. So, with that, I will now need comments when I go through the major, for the standards of variation. Comments that disagree with me. All right? So, item number one, the request of variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. I do agree that that standard has been met. It is, in the, in the big scheme of things, it is a very small issue, particularly given the lot sizes in that neighborhood. Having a story and a half garage is fairly large to be that close right to the main alley, but I don't think that that will cause any, any impact on the use or enjoyment of the adjacent properties. So I believe that that standard has been met. Number two, the request of variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Obviously, one of the biggest intents is that we are able to modify our homes to fit our families, and the way that they grow and change, and the way that needs change over time, right? We're not living like we did in the 1900s. We live a very different way now. And so, to be able to make those accommodations. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. I don't believe that this hardship, or this practical difficulty, is peculiar to the property. There are quite a few garages in Evanston that are detached and that, for this same reason, are not attached to the house, because it causes all this grief with side yard setbacks and other things. So I don't believe that that standard has been met.
Excuse me, I would say that that standard has been met, because we are talking about the property as it is today. And as it is today, the garage is sitting three feet from the alley. And so, to attach that garage to the home, to be in compliance, would require that the garage be torn down and moved two feet, very possibly to the detriment of the landscaping and the rest of the property. So as that property is today, the hardship is peculiar to that property.
Thank you.
I agree that the hardship is peculiar to that property if you want the attached garage. However, I also have to say, Mary Beth, if standard one and two have been met, that we are adjusting homes for current lifestyle and for current families, then standard three not being a hardship, would that cause it not to pass?
So the way that I view the standards is that at any point, if any one of those standards is not met, then your vote for the variance is necessarily a no vote. So moving on to number four. The property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. I don't think that standard has been met, because I think that they can, with the exception of getting an attached garage, and I'm not sure that an attached garage is enough of a particular hardship or practical difficulty. Again, there are thousands of detached garages in Evanston. It would be nice to have an attached garage, but I don't feel that that's at the same level as some of these other hardships we have of, that we see here at the zoning board. So I do not believe that that standard has been met.
And I believe that that standard has been met, because the garage at the time, when they were new owners and bought the property, they placed the garage close to the house, so it's in the middle of the yard, in the middle of the lot, as I understand it. So for them to add on to the house in order to accommodate their family, the garage being at its current location, there would be, sure, they could do a very small alleyway between the garage and the house in order to not connect it, but, you know, once again, I don't think that that is following best building practices, number one. But number two, I think that that is a very, he would suffer a particular hardship, because he would like to attach his garage to his home. And because of where the garage is located, and because, I just don't see that it's hurting anything. So I believe that that standard has been met, because he would suffer a particular hardship. He would have to completely redo his housing plans for, to create a small alleyway between the home and the garage in order to not attach them.
Thank you. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. I believe that standard has been met, because they're, they're doing this renovation, so that it works, the house works better for them, their family, and their needs. So that standard has certainly been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in this property. I don't believe that has been met, because as we heard testimony, the garage was built only five years ago by this same owner. So, they've unfortunately created their own hardship on this, so that standard has not been met.
And again, I will say that the standard has been met. And again, I will say that the standard has been met, because the circumstances five years ago were not the same as the circumstances are today. And even though they had put the garage up, they had not anticipated, by the, um, testimony given to us, that they would be attaching the, the garage to the house, or that they would even be expanding the house. So, they didn't create the difficulty purposefully, and now they want to do an improvement to their house, and this hardship is existing. So, I don't think that there was, uh, an intention to create the hardship in order to hoodwink, uh, um, uh, an addition that would attach this garage five years down the road. Um, so, in that sense, I do not believe that, uh, this standard is, um, not met.
Thank you. Number seven, the request of variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals issues its decision or recommendation to the city council regarding said variation. Um, I believe that there is a conforming location, uh, for an addition that encompasses all the things that are part of this addition that connects to the garage. Um, so, I don't believe that that standard has been met.
I believe that this is the least deviation for what the, um, what the design is that has been offered. In every other facet, their property is in compliance with zoning regulations. And so, if they were to bring the, um, additions within six inches of the garage, uh, they would be, they wouldn't have had to come before this board. It, the only necessity to come before this board is that they want to make the logical next step and attach that garage to the addition, which, in this day and age, um, especially given the weather we've had the last few weeks, uh, that's, seems a very practical and forward-thinking, um, thing to do. So, I think the standard has been met.
The only clarification I'd like to make to your statement is that, uh, when you have, uh, a, there needs to be a minimum 10-foot distance between the main structure and an accessory structure when they're not combined. So, we're not talking about six inches.
Well, thank you for, for bringing that up, because...
Yeah, that's the difference.
Now, it is really a particular hardship. I think that you've just, um, illustrated the point that the architect has been making. If they were to try to do an addition to the house and keep it 10 feet away from this garage, that would, um, that would, I don't know that they would be able to do any addition.
Yes.
And, and so, they could tear the garage down and, and destroy the nicely drained backyard and the beautiful trees, and put the garage someplace else, or they could incorporate that garage in their addition and, um, have, instead of having a property that goes straight back on the property line with a, an odd garage on the, legal non-conforming garage on the alley, I think that they have taken pains to, uh, do a modest, um, addition that incorporates that garage. I think it would be very awkward to, and I'm glad that you brought that up, because it would be very awkward to do any kind of addition that's 10 feet away from that garage.
Thank you. So, with that, do I have a motion? We've gone through the seven standards. There are only seven, right? Yeah. Seven standards. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the, um, I don't have the number there.
[laughing]
Thank you so much. Um, I move that we approve the, uh, renovation for the house at 13 fif, 3015 Payne Street, KCBA 17ZM JV dash 0027, uh, provided that the work is done in conformance with the documents that you have presented here.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. With a vote of four to one, your motion, your ordinance, nope, motion passes. Um, so you will move on to city council for approval?
No, we're, we're the determining body.
Oh, yeah, that's right, sorry. We're the determin, determining body. So, congratulations and good luck with your project. Thanks for coming out. Is there anything else we're discussing tonight?
I make a motion, adjourn.
Hang on, was there anything else we're discussing?
Our meeting scheduled for May 16th is canceled due to a lack of items.
Nice.
Now, I make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.